Okay, being seven o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second round, Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any walk-ins this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the report of the town administrator.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. One is, I wanted to call the board's attention to, and folks in the audience at home, that we've had the first of three film screenings in association with our sister city, Soucy Umbray. The first one was last week, and there's another one coming up Saturday, March 4th, and Friday, April 28th. So if folks could put that on their calendar to support the sister city relationship we have with Soucy Umbray for a $10 donation. We had something in this, in the past with the Easter Rebellion. It was very successful, so I want to give a shout out to them. And also, as the board knows, you have another item on your agenda tonight relative to our twinning relationship with Cork County and Island that we'll be talking about later. This past weekend, there was a boat show in Boston, and the Situate folks and boaters and Waterways Commission folks at EDC were well represented. I probably can't do it justice, but I believe Selectman Harris went, so perhaps you could inform the board.
Um, yeah, I went in Saturday night, really not expecting to see anything like this. Came around the corner, and there must have been, like I was telling Tricia, there wasn't one booth, there were like six. It was all people from Situate. So to start with, you had Fran McMillan and, um, um, I'm trying to play.
Seat appointment.
Yeah, yeah, but, but he was there, um, just really, you know, bringing attention to Situate. And he had about two or three booths. Dick Eckhouse, that's what I'm thinking. So they were there to answer questions, and it was just, I took pictures of it, I was blown away with the information they had, and just, you know, just nothing, I was telling Tricia, nothing but good things can come up from this. Next booth up, um, there was, um, Situate Boatworks was there. They had their own private booth promoting what they do at the marina and so forth. Next one up was another Situate resident selling maps and things like that, and Russell Clark was there. So it really, I didn't ask how many people came through the boat show in the course of a week, but it was phenomenal. He said, um, not Russell, but Fran McMillan was telling me that people from Plymouth have started to, you know, ask questions and so forth, you know, saying, you know, so I think they'll be, you know, jumping on board. So I just, I called Tricia and said, sent her pictures, I said, this is, you couldn't, you know, ask for anything any better for a Situate harbor, it was just fantastic. Thanks, Tricia.
Great. Um, I want to give the members the public facilities update. Both of the projects are almost nearing completion. The library project substantial completion date is moved out from approximately March 15 to the end of the month for some additional work to be done, mostly around electrical. But we anticipate that, you know, that won't be a stumbling block. The public safety complex reached substantial completion today, and less than half of the contingency, a little, almost half of the contingency has been spent. So it is definitely on time and on budget. And the police and fire station three will be slowly moving into that building over the next month. So substantial completion just means the contractor has punch list items, and that the town now becomes the owner of that building. And then eventually, our insurance agent will go in and inventory all the new property inside the building. We obviously own the building and no contents right now. But one of the critical pieces in having substantial completion is that our new communication system will be operational. And as we've talked about before, that is a date set by the E-911 Board. It's not a date that the town had control over. We learned today that the March 1st date for the cutover is going to be pushed out a little, but rather than try to explain it to you, I brought the two people who know best in. So Chief Stewart and Deputy Thompson, if you want to come up and explain what our new communication center is going to bring for the town, and also when the cutover date will be.
Okay. This, uh, this public safety communication center is obviously, it's a puzzle in and of itself, and a much broader puzzle. Right now, we have several vendors, from the electrician to the radio people, to the security and video people, to Comcast, Verizon, General Dynamics. What is going in this building is the next generation E-911 from General Dynamics. They took the bid over from Verizon, so it's a complete swap over, new equipment. All that has pretty much been in place up there. We've been working on the March 1st date from General Dynamics for probably nine or 10 months now. What we found out during the course of last week is that there's certain components that aren't quite keeping up. There's Comcast and Verizon, although they had fell a little bit behind, and it wasn't, it wasn't them, it was more the worker orders weren't filed by GD. But they've really stepped up. Comcast was down here pretty much the next day. Verizon, we met with their engineers up there last Friday. They were on site today, and they plan on being spliced in by the end of the week. With that, the radio people and everybody else can kind of do their job and get this thing running. This joint police-fire dispatch, the communication specialists that'll be working out of there, it's a lot more complicated than what the police are doing and the fire are doing separately. The, uh, there's a lot more components to it, and there's a video system, there's security systems, on top of having to learn each other's disciplines. They're going to be cross-trained. So right now, the police dispatchers have been trained in emergency medical dispatch, the EMD piece, and all of the dispatchers have been trained in the next generation system. So right now, we are moving forward with additional training on the building itself, and that's going to probably take place as soon as the certain people who aren't Corey and Seeger certified. By the end of this week, we hope to have everybody who's going to work out of there that's certified. You have to be certified to be around certain police paperwork. So the fire dispatchers have to get up to speed. Once that happens, we'll be training out of that site, and we should be ready whatever date we do end up with. I don't anticipate GD pushing us off any more than absolutely necessary. But once everything is spliced in, there's a, a burn-in time period, which is typically two weeks. So everything's fired up, but then it just sits there, and it makes sure that everything's functioning properly. In time-sensitive situations like we are under, they can reduce that to one week, and they feel that that one week is sufficient. We will have to file a waiver with the state on it, but it's, it's not a problem on a regular basis. So, and lastly, is the supervision piece. The, uh, you know, in the next few weeks, we hope to have a supervisor who's going to be a dispatcher, but also supervise and manage their own budget for the, for the communications center. And, you know, that, that piece there is important because if it, when you combine the police and fire dispatchers, all the ongoing training, all the ongoing budgeting issues and time off and everything like that, if it wasn't a dispatcher who's going to manage that function, it would mean that I'd probably have to take an administrative lieutenant or the fire department, I'd have to commit a captain to those administrative hours, and it's just not money well spent when, you know, the police lieutenant should be administering to police business. So I was relieved to see that that, that component was coming true in this merger. So what I'd like to do is, Deputy Thompson has some pictures, and he can explain in greater technical terms, uh, the project.
Thanks, Chief. So it's, uh, it's kind of, it doesn't seem like that long ago that we were here just kind of talking about the vision of this. And now, a couple of years later, and thousands of hours of work into it, it's here. So I just have a couple of photos that will just kind of bring you in the front door and show you the dispatch where it is now. It certainly doesn't do justice to actually what it's like to walk into the building. But really, when you just start with going in the doors, one of the big things that we wanted to focus on with this is security. So for our communication specialists, they're in that building 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are kind of the first line of anybody who's coming into the building. So we wanted to ensure that these employees of the town are secure, any situation that comes up, they're in there. So as you kind of go through and bring yourself into the lobby, they're met with, they're, they're enclosed in a place that's safe for them, it's a, it's a nice spot for the public to come into, similar to the building that we have now where you come in and you're, you're at a window there, that's kind of the space. So this whole lobby area, although it's not really shorn, shown completely, this is where the public is coming in and will first meet with those communication specialists and conduct their business there. This space is ballistic enclosed as far as where the dispatchers are, so it's giving them that security and protection, and there's space there for the public to come in and kind of do their business. This whole building, the amount of automation in it is just amazing. So everything that's happening here, much like today, your toaster at home is pretty much automated, it's very similar here. So lights, doors, locks, cameras, motion, all of those things are included in building automation. And all of that technology really comes back to the hub of where the communication specialists are sitting. So they can monitor all of these different actions that are going on with the building, but they can also do things like open and close doors. So from a time standpoint, if it's 2:00 in the morning, we'll have more control about who's coming in that building. So those doors can be locked, they can kind of bet who's walking in the building first, and there's also that secure vestal there. So if somebody's having an emergency, they can lock that behind them and kind of be in a capsulated area. So coming into now this communication space, on, on one side we hear, we have kind of little break area, lockers for communication specialists to use, there's a restroom facility in there, so it gives them something that they don't have now, which is essentially space to kind of take care of personal business while they're in there in terms of getting through the day. A lot of times, they're in there for eight, 16 hours. So it just, it gives them ability to kind of, to handle those things. And then looking into the space itself, right now, we have our two primary consoles that are in here. So if you remember back from when we first started talking about this, in total, there'll be four consoles in here. These are the first two, which are newly purchased. The second two that will be coming in will be transferring up from our existing station. We purchased those a couple of years ago with 911 grant, so that will work us through the transition to the next gen 911. These new stations are larger, they're ergonomic, and then they go up, so you could work at your workstation standing up, adjustable heights, it's more workspace than what they have currently. So we kind of took feedback from our current dispatchers as far as what would work for them and what wouldn't, what doesn't, and tried to incorporate that here. There's a lot of technology that's surrounding them in terms of the video wall that's up in front of them there, so they're getting video feed in from essentially different areas in town. The harbor, the pier, Cole Parkway, the schools, our current building. There's all kinds of video feeds that are coming in here that they can monitor in addition to everything that's going on in the station. So they'll see detention cells, they'll see areas throughout, all of that's controlled here, in addition to access control and security throughout the building. So there are panic buttons in detention cells, there are all kinds of alerts and things that come back, and they all come into here as the hub. So we wanted to be sure that we were putting together a system for them, for those people who are in there, they can manage all these alerts that come in, and then probably engage them and take care of them. This is just a view of sitting at that desk, and the monitors that are here now, there are currently four, those expand to eight. So when next gen 911 goes in, there are two more monitors, radio system is two more monitors, we have CAD, we have criminal justice information. The amount of information that they're responsible for dealing with is, is amazing. So, so this workspace will expand even further. And this is just a quick screenshot of what just the radio solution works, looks like. So if you remember us talking about that a long time ago, there were a couple of phases to this. So this product here is the ZTRON MAX, which there have been some evolutions that have happened with how our radio project has played out. So this is just one screen that a dispatcher would have, where they would be able to key up not only Situate assets as far as police and fire, but also mutual aid assets, Bay Purn, Plymouth County Fire, everything can be handled here. In addition, opening up Sallyport doors, hitting the preemption light, traffic light on, on 3A, all of that's controlled here from the desktop. And then just kind of getting a little bit beyond, this is a shot of upstairs in the current server room as it's looking. Again, these, these pictures don't do justice to the miles of cable that are up there. So when you walk into that room, it's just, it's overwhelming to think that all of this stuff is coming back and is actually going to a logical place. So security that's in here, servers that are in here, everything that's patched, all comes back into this room. And then the second racks, our radio racks will be down in the secondary radio room. So the communication that we have across the network now, this building is attached into the wider radio network that goes throughout the entire town. And we're now, got a slide coming up here, across four different towers throughout the town, this being now the fifth tower which connects us onto that network. So we have the existing tower here, one at Bear Hill, one at Carolina Hill, and another the NOAA station. So all those connect up to make our network. And remember, if we had a conversation a while ago about the monopole that's behind the building. So that monopole is up now, there's a single microwave dish at the top of it, which is basically connecting us back and giving that connectivity to the radio network. So all in between the microwave, Comcast, and then control stations that are on there, we essentially have three levels of redundancy communication contact for this building. So we're hopefully in a good position though, as storms come in and things, we have different levels of communication. And this is just a photo of our existing tower out back that we've just added a microwave onto, so we make the connection. And then you can kind of see from a geographic standpoint how those towers are laid out kind of across our coastline and what covers our area. So 30,000 foot is probably a lot, but the amount of technology that's in there is, is amazing. And to see now the work of the architects, the engineers, the vendors, all the people from the town who have been involved in this for all of these hours, it's, it's amazing to see that come together, and you can actually put your hands on it.
And now what we have is the additional, the rest of the training piece, and, you know, I have a healthy respect for the people who answer our phones on 911 on a daily basis. Now it's their turn to step up, there's, there's some cross-training that needs to be done, and, you know, that we're going to be pushing them to learn each other's disciplines. And, you know, we, hopefully within six months, it's, they have their training complete where they can handle anything from either side of the house, and, you know, it's, but they're going to be, they're going to be challenged with it.
Just a question, so like before, if you called 911 from your cellphone, would it pass through the state police first?
Yep.
And then come to Situate? Does it automatically go to us now, to you guys?
It will continue to go to the state, that's up to the state police to, I'm sorry, 911 to determine when that change will happen.
Okay.
So initially, they're going through the first phase of just rolling out next generation 911.
Okay.
So at this point, that will continue to happen. They're going to be working as they get their next gen rolled out to start to pare that down. They're using other substations, so it won't need the state police. Northern Essex County, it sounds like they might switch over there first, the county sheriff out there handles a lot. So they've got multiple phases of how this will ultimately roll out. So day one, the chain will still continue to happen, but with us, day one, we won't have the third layer. So state police directed 911, and then we're immediately dispatching. We're under the current model, if it's a fire call or if it's an EMS call, it's then rolled down again to the fire. So that piece, that next roll down goes away once these two are combined. So it's handled, once it hits the Situate Communications, it's done, and then it's dispatched from there.
Right, sure. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I, how much, how long will the vendors be available for, you know, not so much training, but questions? Can, can we as, you know, your employees, your dispatchers, or, you know, anyone from the departments, you know, call on any of these vendors? You know, the building itself is, is one thing, but I agree with you, Mark, I mean, I've seen it, there's miles and miles of wires and coax cables, so.
With the turnover of the building comes a, a big book, and it, you know, it's a troubleshooting book, and it will land in Kevin Kelly's lap. And they've already been going through a lot of the operational training up there, from, you know, the, the fire pump and the electronics, and to, you know, as we sat through the other day, some of these security issues, the video cameras, the audio systems, and things like that.
Is there a time period, you know, they turned the building over to us, you know, middle of March or something, is, do we get six months, a year, or is it different with different people, and?
We're just maybe being able to reach out to them for a long, long time.
Right. We've got the benefit that a lot of the vendors that we're working with, we have existing relationships with, so we've got their cellphone numbers, and they've all been unbelievable. So even just to text and give them a quick question, they get right back to you. And we see that, I think, continuing, because we've had these ongoing relationships with them and continue to build new relationships. So I feel well supported in what's, what's going in.
Great.
Chief, do you feel comfortable, I know that you mentioned General Dynamics is going to be looking to maybe potentially reduce it to a week, but I'm like, if, is it something that you feel more comfortable? If it's two weeks and we can address the issue with General Dynamics so that you're not rushed?
I questioned it initially, and I was told by General Dynamics, by the, the project manager down in Houston, that this is typical, and the one week is more than enough, and as did the, the engineer who was on site. And it's, it's pretty typical. I was concerned with it initially.
And they have two layers of redundancy as well. So from a public safety standpoint, if anything were to fail with the primary, it will roll over to the Hingham Shrek, but also part of the reason why we leave this other building up for a couple of weeks with that other dispatch console there, is we can roll back to that as well.
Okay.
So if we needed to make a shift, that other infrastructure is still in place.
Yeah, it's very impressive, and it seems like the job of dispatch is more than just, you know, sending a car or a truck somewhere, so it's.
It always has been, it's going to be even more now.
So it's great. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Deputy, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. So I have two more items, I'm going to go a little out of order for item number four, which is other items. And under my what's the story section tonight, I want to talk a little bit about sea level rise. I think I forwarded the board the article in the Sunday Globe that Boston is contemplating building a 20-foot breakwater jetty seawall to deal with sea level rise and storm surge, which prompted a number of inquiries to our office in terms of what Situate's doing. And the thing that is concerning these days, especially for us, which is why I have this segment under my report, is to be able to address things that are stated in blogs or other places that are patently false, and that we need to have an opportunity sometimes here to correct them. And one of the things that came to my attention today was about the town's preparation for sea level rise. And also that while the storms are of concern to people and our infrastructure, they're not as bad as storms in the past, and therefore, you know, whatever you feel about sea level rise or whatever, either we don't have to worry, or we should be really afraid. And one of the issues was around the, the safety of our wastewater treatment plant. And there was a statement that was made in some blog today that said, "The town is, according to the new flood maps, the sewer treatment plant would be underwater, the water treatment plant in Green Bush would be close to being impacted, and lightly contaminated, among other bad things." In fact, the town four years ago did a sea level rise study, and the purpose of that study through a grant was to look at all the town's public facilities and see how they would be impacted by sea level rise for 25, 50, and 75 years. And the truth of the matter is, is that the wastewater treatment plant will be protected 75 years from now, because with any storm surge, the water would go into our Eastland marshes and tributaries and not danger the sewer discharge or the sewer plant. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's the facts about that. And the other thing is, it doesn't really matter that the storms in 78 and 91 were of a higher storm surge than the ones we're experiencing right now. What's important for us to know is it's the frequency of the storms we're getting, which have been, we've been told by experts, is the significance of a 100-year storm is really impacting us every two years cumulatively, because we are getting more frequency. And it's not about sea level rise, and it's not about storm surge, it's about repeated actions against our infrastructure that are more frequent, that are continually to challenge us in terms of our infrastructure. So I really wanted to make sure I took an opportunity tonight to question authority and have people come here if they have questions about the town's operations relative to that, because that was a blatantly false statement, and I wanted to correct it. The next thing on my agenda under my report is, last meeting, you had the public records policy to adopt, and it wasn't included through a miscommunication. That is before you tonight, and this is a requirement of the new public records law that went into effect January 1st. This is a policy that we've patented after consultation with legal counsel and other communities, and so there's a motion and an executive order for you to adopt that new public records policy for the town.
Do you want to do that right now?
Yeah.
So this is, it's not optional, it just says that there's, there has to be, what is the initials, RAO or something?
A Records Access Officer.
So we have to.
Yep.
Governor Baker said that we have to hire somebody to, or assign somebody to do that task, so that we can turn public requests really quickly, and hit the 10-day minimum, and respond to public records within 10 days, post on our website, and create and appoint the position to do that.
And as Michelle Segaze explained to you, she is the Chief Resource Records Access Officer, and there are, I believe, seven others that have been designated in town departments for that, and they've received training. And then we're going to have forums for all the town employees and board and committee members to understand the new requirements.
Right.
And that should be rolled out probably in the next two to three weeks. We have it all set to go.
So, I mean, everybody had a chance to review it, it seems like it's, it's all set, so, I have no.
So we've been following this.
Yep.
Anyways. Want a motion?
Just have to vote on it, yeah.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a town of Situate Public Records Compliance Policy.
Second.
Second round, Mr. Bignani, for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're next. Thank you. Is that all you have, Tricia, or you got?
That is, Mr. Chair.
Before we go, I just, Marty, if I can, just comment on what Tricia said about, you just mentioned kind of fake news. You know, we, we really recommend people to contact the town about things that they have questions about. You know, obviously, there's social media out there where people can get, a lot of people seeing stuff quickly, and there's a lot of misinformation that goes out there. And Tricia is very passionate about getting the right information out there, and she, if you send an email, if you call up Lorraine, or you call up somebody here, we'll get you the information or tell you where to go to get it. It's very frustrating when we hear people say things that, that we all take personally. I mean, we don't like hearing people slander our town, and, you know, so ask the question before you do it, you know, it's respectful to all of us, and, and it doesn't mislead the public. And, you know, occasionally, you know, it's, it's hard for us to respond in social media because it gets blown out of proportionance, you know, so we would recommend that, that you just contact us, and we're more than happy to answer the questions.
So you ready for the?
Moving on, 7:30, we have a discussion, a vote of the, and the award of the Widows Walk Food and Beverage Contract.
So the town went out to bid for a food and beverage contract for Widows Walk. We talked about the parameters of that, I think, two meetings ago, and we received three bids, all above the minimum threshold for a bid that the town requested of 27,000. And Nancy and I reviewed the bids, checked references, and we're very pleased tonight to recommend the highest successful bidder, because it's, it works the opposite of the lowest for other things, and that is to Twin Mary's LLC of Situate. All the bids we received were from Situate. Mary and Mary are here tonight, so you can come up here. I believe Lorraine tried to email you the proposal, we, I don't know, did you bring the hard copy?
Yeah, we've got a couple of them.
I did, and I gave them.
Right. So I, if you had a chance to review it, a comprehensive, extremely well-thought-out presentation, clearly a lot of work went into it, we're very excited, and wanted to bring Mary and Mary in for the board so you could ask them any questions that you want.
So, I mean, tell us a little bit, I, I know, you know, I've, I've been through the entire proposal and everything, it's just, it's really awesome. And just tell us a little bit about some of the things you're going to be doing, I mean, I, just for everybody to hear, you know?
Well, so we have a pretty passionate vision about really taking care first of the golfers, the leaguers, the daily golfers, but also, it's important to us to welcome the community and the public in. We're passionate about supporting our local fishermen and our local farms and gardens inside of the restaurant. We're going to be open for a quick-serve breakfast, as well as a full-service sit-down menu for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, as well as a turnaround menu, so that you can call in from the ninth hole, or you can preorder, or eventually order online and just come in and pick up. It's a very, very extensive menu for all three courses, brunch on Sundays, of course. We intended to, which is not included in the proposal yet, it's still in the works, special drink menu that honors our founding forefathers and mothers. So anyone who's honored on the golf course will have something, you know, named in their honor.
Sean?
Sean.
Mary has been working at the golf course for.
Three years.
Three years now.
So.
So.
She will be...
I know the works, you know, what the guys like, and the comings and goings, so...
Mary will be operating the front of the house, managing the bar and the servers, as well as any special events. I'll be the executive chef, managing the back of the house, and any culinary operations, our vendors, financials, et cetera. So we are targeted to open, our plan is to open with a soft launch on, on or around the 25th of March. We are, we are moving as rapidly as we can with paperwork.
It's hard to...
We have a couple of questions, but we're very eager and very excited.
Very excited.
We've gotten, initially already, I think we have six requests for special events, and reservations are coming in, so...
Awesome. So are gonna be changes to the way it looks?
Well, yes. Yes.
We definitely need to, we definitely need to clean it up quite a bit. There's a lot of work in the kitchen that needs to be done. Working there from experience, this part of the equipment that is failing. So I don't know if we can do a walkthrough in the back of the kitchen to go through that, you know, to see. I know it was an as-is thing, but I knew that, like, the stoves and the ovens don't work. One works, but the door falls open, you have to hold it closed with a pop. So I don't know if that's on us, or, you know what I mean? But there, there's a lot of work to be done, so...
There are a few pre-opening questions we have, but initially, yes, we have some, our theme would be more coastal, and a little more of the masculine side to keep in ties with our coastal community, the views of the North River. We'd like to, well, we're ready to paint and do some minor repairs inside. We've selected furniture, that happened today, could be here within the next week. And eventually, what we're really, really excited about is hopefully the approval to create an actual bar, where you could sit and hopefully be able to look over the, the river and the golf course in some way, so we'd have a lot of plans.
So are you gonna focus on, on dinner and stuff outside of the hours of the golf course? You know, are you gonna try and turn it more into a restaurant than just a golf?
Yeah, well, a little bit more into, like, tavern. He would have had some great, you know, outside business, but I, I think he followed more of the golf course hours, you know. So we'd like to extend that further, to have people be able to say, "Oh, well, let's come back for dinner," or, you know, something like that. And the breakfast, I mean, he had a great breakfast in the crowd, and, you know, we'd like to continue. So just to improve, make improvements, and, you know, draw people in, fun.
John?
No, I'd just say congratulations. I have to say, is it the name officially, the one that you put on the menus, or are those the proposed menus? Is that the name of it?
Um, yes, that is the name we've...
So we can disclose it, is that okay, the North River Grill?
The North River Grill.
I think it's very clever.
Yes.
It's ambitious. I just ask that you, you take those steps that you need in order to make sure your business is a success. You know it better than, than most. And I have to say that there's a lot of potential with the golf course, and the potential going forward, as the town is going to be taking a look at the facility as a whole, and look forward to seeing your success. And also wanted to at least say thank you to Jamie Miller for, for the number of years that he was running it. I know, I personally think we have to see this board send a letter out to thank him for at least 10 years that I was there, much longer.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Because he did a good job, but like anything, you know, you folks are now taking it over, and we're looking forward to it, so...
Well, I had the opportunity to work with him for three years, and got to know, you know, he seems a pretty good teacher, too, with the business and everything, so we'll bring a little bit of that, you know, into it.
There's also a website that's available, you can look, we have a Facebook page.
Which is, what is it, WW?
WW, it's long, it's the www.northrivergrill@widowswalk.com. And as soon as we're able to go ahead, if you access Widows Walk Golf, you'd be able to be directed right to our website, so you could view menus and make reservations.
So that's northrivergrill@widowswalkgolfcourse?
Dot com, yeah.
Oh, @widowswalk.com, great. Motion?
No, not yet. I just wanted to thank the girls as well, and again, like John, thank Jamie for doing a, you know, great job for a long time. That's exciting. I know with your background, I just, it's a great combination, 7-Eleven, and I know, Mary, you've worked there for now a few years. You gonna move the bar from where it is to overlook and enlarge?
Well, no, what I wanted, what I would like to do, and I'll see if I can drag some of the guys into, see if I can get some kind of essence, just to be to extend it, not to have it flush like it is. I think, because a lot of the guys like to come in and hang after golf, and I think it would be nice to be able to extend it, like, you know, you know where the TV, he had the TV with Walt hanging up?
Right.
Extend it out to like there, and then bring it around. So push it forward and kind of bring it out. And take out those pub tables, so that it just gives more room.
So like an L-shaped, Mary, or a U-shaped?
Like an L.
Yeah.
Well, think, think about how much it might cost, and, as I said to you, you know, I don't know what this board's gonna do, but I can tell you what I'd like to do to the building. And, you know, there's a lot of major overhauls, so I would hate to see you invest a lot. I wanted to find out that, you know...
Right, well, that's, you know, it's all depending on how much... Our initial, this paint and a little bit of lipstick and...
The best room in the house is the men's bathroom, so I'm like, you know, with the view, it's, it's gotta change.
We agree.
It does.
Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
Move to award contract to Twin Mary's LLC of 22 Jenkins Place, Situate, Mass., for the food and beverage operations at the Widows Walk Golf Course from March 1st, 2017, through February 29th, 28th, 2019, for an annual lease payment of $38,502, with a two-year, with two, one-year option for extension.
Second. Second, Mr. Harris, further discussion? Anybody in the audience? Hello? Yes, sir.
I gotta say that...
Just your name and it's a...
It's a name, and I know we all know you, but...
Jack, I gotta say that, one of the things, these two people are well liked, on golfers. And, oh, good job.
I love him.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And wait for it to open.
So the next thing we really need to do is, we have to do a change of manager on the liquor license, so you won't be able to serve, and that can take four to six weeks. So Lorraine will work with you now that they've awarded the contract to do the paperwork at the ABCC, so we can do the change of manager.
And entertainment, Tricia, they want to, probably want to do entertainment as well?
That would be something that we'll explore further on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, Mary, good luck.
Next, we have a presentation of the snow removal operation and policies, Kevin Cafferty. Mike, Mr. Breen as well, how you doing, Mike?
Yep, yep. Good evening, excuse me. Um, there were some questions just about the snow policy, so we figured we'd come in, we would explain to you our operations that we typically do in the snow, and answer any questions that the board or anybody might have in general about the operation. Department of Public Works handles snow emergencies through the Highway Department. Mike Breen is the Highway Superintendent. He runs the snow and ice-fighting operations on a day-to-day basis. His priorities are to make sure police and fire can move safely in town, on all the town roads, to open the main roads and the secondary roads for use by public, then to open up residential streets, and then to open up the sidewalks. We do some pre-treatment. If a storm's forecast, town applies some salt to the hills and some of the other areas in town that could be slippery first. It all depends on the forecast. If we have a forecast where we have rain coming in, and then it transfer over to snow, it's kind of a waste to do the pre-application, and we don't. Equipment-wise, the town typically deploys about 55 pieces of equipment during a storm. It's split up between about 27 town pieces and 28 contractors. All DPW divisions are involved in plowing highway, water, super, water sewer, public rounds, and the transfer station. Out of those 28 pieces of equipment, there's one piece of equipment that we leave full-time at the transfer station, so that we're able to maintain that. We also go out and we open up our water wells, our sewer, pump stations, and other miscellaneous areas. The town has 38 routes. Some of the equipment is paired up to plow in tandem. The routes of, I gave a memo out to you guys, and it goes through all the routes that we have, the 38 different ones with the different streets on it. Town typically deploys two spotters to oversee routes, to make sure everything's being completed efficiently. Sometimes the spotters are reassigned if we have a piece of equipment that goes down, or something, or if somebody calls in sick, a spotter might jump into a piece of equipment and run the equipment. Our typical budget is $497,113, which is an unrestricted budget, which can go into deficit spending if we have a bad year like we did in 2015. You can continually overspend that as a means of public safety. Last, typically what our budget is, is 42% of the budget was equipment rentals, which one piece of equipment we do rent, we rent the loader typically to load the salt and also handle some of the areas down in Humrock. And then the rest is contractors. We have contractors come in, and that falls under the equipment rental. 40% of that budget goes to salt. 11% is overtime, and 7% is miscellaneous equipment parts. A lot of those are for the blades, different bolts, repairs to any equipment that we have, or anything up to that effect. As a comparison, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Town of Situate has 121 miles of roadways versus Norwell's, about 89 miles of roadway. So far this year, we have already responded to 18 events. It seems like a mild year, but believe it or not, these guys have been out there 18 times. The police call, we come. We don't hesitate, we don't wait, the trucks come out, and they go out, and they treat the roads. There's nothing to that effect. We vary how we treat the roads. If there are a couple of slippy, are slippery areas, we might just do the hills, or we might just do certain areas of town, as opposed to sanding, salting the whole town. Two things we do in that, it maintains our salt stockpile, and also sometimes you just don't need the whole, the whole town done. And we've worked that out with the police, kind of in, in three different segments of how we can do it. It's either just do the hills, do the hills and mains, or do the entire town. And that depends on what they call out to, to request. As a comparison, from some 2015 records, Situate's seventh in miles out of 22 communities on the South Shore, and we have the second in allotted budget for our snow miles. And I can, I can open it up, some questions if anybody has questions. The things I'd like to say, the guys do a great job. Out of those crews that go out, out of those 55 pieces of equipment, they're usually out there for the storm. Mike's very, tries to be prudent when he calls them in, because there's no second round of guys that come in. We don't hit the panic button, and there's another crew that comes out. If these guys work 18 hours for a storm, they work 18 hours. We don't have backup, and we don't, you know, we do the best we can. Some guys volunteer, or we bring another guy in to run overnight and try to maintain, if we've got some bad areas, and keep it up. But a lot of times, these guys really pull the yeoman's work and stay out late and do what has to be done.
Well, there's no question you guys work very hard. You've shown us this a couple of years ago, and there's a list here that literally shows every street. And like you said, what do you say, there's 38?
38 to 39, yeah.
38 areas. So we break the town into actual 38 areas, and we say, "Bill, this is your 10 streets." And, you know, "Steve, this is your 10 streets," and they plow those streets. And like you said, it's the length of the storm. You know, I asked for this to be on here, because it's important to us. We wanna do whatever we can to do it, to make it better, and make it easier for the public, and, and hear their input. But there's no doubt that you guys work very hard. Like you said, sometimes it's 10, 12 hours at a time. You got guys out there working, plowing these streets. And, you know, some streets are more important than others, and it may not always agree with the public, but, you know, like you read down initially, the, the job is to get the mains clear, and, you know, get the hills, and get, get public access for emergency vehicles is the number one goal. And like someone said, the sidewalks are last on the list, and the public ways are, you know, probably right before that, I would imagine. The one thing I do wanna know, or just make sure everyone understands, is that there is, there is a dispatch person, right? There's someone here who's, who's here to handle phone calls. So if you have a problem with an area, and also, as Kevin said, there's two people that go out and kind of spot-check everything and see what the condition of the roads are, so they can allocate resources how they need it. But there's a way for you to get in touch with people, to say, "Hey, this street seems particularly bad," or, or "This area doesn't look like it's been plowed." I mean, maybe a plow truck's broken down, or who knows what it is. But, but there is a communication method for the public to get in touch with us, so that we know.
Somebody always answers the phone.
Right.
And, and we say two spotters, that doesn't include Mike. Mike's out spotting a lot, and I drive him crazy, because I go out and say, "Hey, what about this street? Have we, have we been down here?" And, you know, not trying to micromanage, but, you know, we, we are watching continuously.
And there's no win. I mean, when a storm happens, it happens quick. We get a lot of snow in a short period of time, and, you know, people are out there working, and there's only so many vehicles are out there that can do it. And, you know, if, if your little street isn't plowed, then that's your biggest concern, where you guys are thinking more big picture of stuff. So, you know, but I do want people to know that there's an avenue for you to cut in touch with the town, to say, "Hey, it doesn't look like you've been on Elm Street," or whatever, and blah, 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 "I saw an accident there, or I saw, you know, someone spin out." And you guys obviously take that, that information and...
Paula keeps a detailed log of every single call-in that comes in, so we, we have it on the snow reports for Kevin. But if anyone has any complaint about their road or anything, Paula logs every single complaint, and, and we have it on the snow report. So, I encourage people to call in if they see a problem.
Well, is there maybe a situation where someone didn't do a good job? That, you know, then we want to know about it. Mike wants to know about it, so we can say, "Hey, you gotta drop your..."
If somebody broke down.
I've heard Sean say, you know, "No, you gotta drop your blade lower, you gotta do whatever." But, you know, or, you know, "We gotta salt these streets more," or sand them or whatever.
I don't know if there's anything we can do about fire hydrants, Mike. Like, for instance, there's, in my neighborhood, I dug it out four or five times over two days, because when the plow driver comes down Merritt Lane, and he hits maple, he just pushes, and he just, you can't even find the fire hydrant. It's got a flag on it, but now I'm out there digging it out, and then I, he comes back again, waits, sees me.
We know where you live, Marty. That's, that's how we work.
Well, I'll find out about the fire hydrant.
If there's any way they can just avoid the fire hydrant.
They dig them out. If it gets real bad, they dig them out.
He's just like, "Everybody else out there, can you stop blowing up my fire hydrant?"
No, I don't, I'm not, I don't care about my driveway or anything, but just the fire hydrants.
So they don't have to go up your driveway anymore?
Right.
Ooh.
And making the call on salt is, is difficult sometimes with pre-treating, because this part of, side of Situate would be a lot of, you know, a lot of rain coming in, and the west side would be a lot of snow. So it's a tough call on pre-treating. I know the state's up real early, and there's no, there's no question about, you know, they're out before anything, rain or, or snow, they're, they're out there. And I'm trying to be as frugal as possible, but also make sure that everything's as safe as possible.
And, and if I can point out, not to cut you off, Marty, is, is Mike's been doing this for about 18 years now, Mike?
Yeah.
There's, there's been no change. I mean, I haven't said, or anybody hasn't said to Mike, you know, "You, you can't, you know, come out at certain times," or, Mike's making those calls the same as he was 18 years ago.
Right.
We're doing the same. We're trying to preserve as much salt as we can. Two reasons: we wanna treat the streets, but also the amount of salt we go, we put out directly gets into the groundwater, too. So you have to really manage what you do for salt. You don't want to, you know, 10,000 tons of salt and, and all of a sudden drive up your, your salt content in your groundwater.
That was a question I had. Are there any roads in Situate that you cannot use salt on?
We try to be careful in some of the areas down around Sherman, in that area that are close to the reservoir. And, you know, we're, we're looking into that closer and closer, and it's something that we're working with the state. We brought it up to the state a couple of times about kicking, you know, relaxing the salt that they use on 3A going down the hill. And it is a dangerous hill. So we've gone back and forth on that a couple of times.
To answer your question, Kevin, they haven't told my trucks to...
No, no, they haven't, because we didn't, we didn't get too far, and, and, but it is something we're looking into in the future, about protecting the reservoir. And, and if I can just say something else, not to get into it, we had calls from the police during one of the last big storms. You know, First Parish was getting really slippery. There was another area in town that was getting slippery, and cars were sliding around and everything else. I was out then, and we had 55 pieces of equipment on the road, and it was blizzard conditions. You shouldn't be on the road driving around, out looking around in sightseeing to see the snow and see if trees fall down, because, because the salt takes time to work. We apply the salt, it might take 55... We apply the salt, it might take 15 minutes, it might take 10 minutes, it might take a half hour to break up some of the areas on the road. You have a downtime in that area. You know, if people stay off the roads, we can clean them up better. And that's a huge thing for people to know. Some people stay off, but there's still other people that go out and they're driving around looking for trees going down. My wife is probably one of them and I'm yelling at her to get back, you know, to stay home.
One last comment, I just want to say, Kevin made a good comment earlier saying that that we can adjust that budget. You know, the budget's in like $500,000, I think we put in there about every year. And you can overspend it, but you still gotta pay for it, right? So when we do overspend it, Tricia's gotta go find the extra $300,000, like two years ago when it was almost $900,000, you had to go find that other $400,000 somewhere else to pay for it through other budget departments or through free cash or whatever it happens to be. So even though it is a budget that you can overspend because it's unpredictable.
But it's not like we shut it down because we're out of money.
Right. And I think that's why the survey data is that, you know, Mike said he's not told not to sander or whatever.
Keep doing your job.
And the budget has not been cut. In fact, it's gone up every single year for the past eight years and the data shows you that we're the second highest out of 22 communities by two and three times the amount that we allocate annually to snow.
But it doesn't even matter what the budget is.
It doesn't matter.
If it snows 10 times, we deal with 10 storms, 20, 20.
And generally it's more likely, to your point, Tony, that we are over the budget than we have lots of money left at the end of the year.
Yeah, we treat it very seriously. We try not to overspend, obviously, you know, and keep the budget down, but it's public safety and we take that as a priority.
Well, we think you guys do a great job. And again, they just call DPW if they see a concern during a storm.
If anybody is a concern, and, you know, we've got concerns from other people too. It goes from both ends of the spectrum. I've got multiple calls that people call and say they think we're putting too much salt on the road and why are the roads black and wet after a storm? We should leave a half inch on the road and it'll slow people down. So it goes both ways. You get each end of the spectrum.
Before you move on, the only thing, you know, and you answered some of the questions. I had people saying things to me that I couldn't believe, that, you know, that Tricia was telling you and you were telling Mike when to go and everyone's, you know, it was just incredible what I hear. So I'm glad to hear that Mike makes the calls and, you know, so we'll put that to rest. The state and the towns, it's night and day. The state has heavy equipment, the towns don't have heavy equipment. So if, the only thing I might ask is if you could possibly deploy them a little sooner because what happens, and you guys know this, but I'll tell those of you that don't, if cars drive on, the snow becomes hard-packed ice and then these light eight-foot plows and nine-foot plows don't weigh enough to scrape it down. And that's where the state has been out, you know, for hours before laying the salt down, you know, and it's regulated 240 pounds per lane mile, but it's, it works. It never freezes so they don't get the hard pack. It goes straight and there's usually trucks in a row taking care of it. These guys are, you know, out there on their own trying to do pelt sacs, dead ends, corners, watching out for hydrants, but we don't have to do that in the state. So there's a, there's a very big difference. But, you know, I, you know, look at, you know, how many miles we have and how many miles are in Norwell and how much salt we put down, you know, per lane mile. I don't, Norwell has 89 miles, we have 102, but Norwell and Situate are night and day difference. If we get two inches of snow, Norwell can have three or four. Cross 3A and it can make a big difference. I too think the guys work very hard. I've seen it since I was, you know, very young. It's just, in some ways it's a lot more difficult to treat the roads in the small towns like we have. So my only thought was maybe sooner. And that was my thought, Mike, that's all.
And our only fear on that, Sean, has been if we bring the guys in too early and they're waiting around for an extra two hours and we may need them two hours on the later end that it gets hotter too. And that's been the only...
Kevin, there are times when the state calls us out and they're wrong. Not very often, but they want us there if the storms, you know, it's gonna start at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, they have us there at 12:00 or 1:00 because they want us ready to go when the snow starts. You know, so, you know, it's, it's, it all comes down to how much you want to spend. If you want black roads, you're gonna, it's gonna cost a lot of money. So, you know, but I know you guys are doing a good job and just that's where I stand, that's what I see.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I just ask a quick question, Paul, we're trying to...
Question.
Hi, guys.
Did I address the hand with that?
I'm sorry. No, as a mother of two drivers, I do keep track of their routes. But in this past storm, there was a circumstance that during the day it did warm up and it softened the snow up. Would it be, are you suggesting that if we had roads around us to call the DPW and have them help?
By all means.
Because it just seems like that if one of the guys that's on, working for the day could do one big sweep, you know, while it's soft, it gets it off the road because what happens is at nighttime it refreezes and then you have all of that crunches sitting on the road, you know? I mean...
That's what happened the last storm. You're right there and it was, that's what happened the last storm. Everyone's different like that, but that was, this was a difficult one. It was a long lasting one. It was hard-packed. The salt did start kicking it up, it got into windrows and then the other guys come in later. So it was very difficult. I definitely try to do that as best we can if the guys are still, you know, able, yeah, able to go and get a couple hours sleep and then go right back at it.
But if people put a call in, that's fine because one of the things we do is we might have the snow operators no longer in the equipment. They might be running a sidewalk or they might be going to a school and hauling some of the snow out of there or cleaning up Cole Parkway and moving some of the piles around. So if in your particular area something opened up, we usually have at least four trucks on just dealing with different areas that we could fix up. And if we don't know about it, we're not gonna hit it. You know, we can miss it. So by all means, call. The fire is always in the office.
Up and around, so I figured they were the ones that were gonna call because if they were not happy.
The fire and police say they can always get through. You know, they'll always get through. And if we get a call, we, you know, we always respond as public safety.
Well, tell people then that, so give the department a call.
And the fire and police know that. They know to contact the DPW.
We have interconnected radios, the police call immediately. If they get a call, they let us know about it immediately.
Got a couple of questions over here.
Follow two on the countryway.
Kevin, you turn this way and he asks you to chair.
I didn't get that name, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. There's you over there.
Tony, I want to go back to a comment you made too. The townspeople were semi-chastised by a selectman.
Keith, why don't you just call out the selectman who you're saying chastised because frankly it wasn't chastised. I made a comment about the employees and the contractors. No, because you want to make a big, huge political statement right now about chastise. That is not chastise. So by all means, I made a comment on Facebook. What do you want to address with me?
I don't think anyone said that the guys didn't work hard and didn't do a good job.
So Keith, why don't you just put that on Facebook and address the issue there like all the other people did? So why are you bringing it up in the selectman's meeting now, Keith? What's the point?
Because we're being told that we can't use Facebook or that we shouldn't.
No, 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 never said that. Never said that.
When we make a normal...
Never said that. He's out of order. He's completely out of order.
That's done. It's all done. Thank you.
While we are here, Fran Leiden did come in. He has been the longtime foreman for the grounds and he handles all the schools, makes sure all the schools are open and a lot of the other routes. So he came in, I'd just like to call Franny out and tell him what a great job he does because, you know, I hope Franny never retires, but someday he will and it'll be some big shoes to fill because the work Franny does, keeping the schools open is incredible. I can't say enough about it. And all the public buildings, I mean, we knew about it. He had surgery earlier this year and when he was out, we really, we felt it. So just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Yes, one more, Kevin.
Robert Marlowe, Situate's political press editor, was just gonna say that Franny, Mike and the crew do an unbelievable job taking care, in particular, of the high school parking lot. And I really want to thank the public for the hard work they do on behalf of the public schools. So thank you, Mike and Franny, all your crew, for all the work you did.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Is there someone more? I've got one more. Sorry.
Just commenting a quick question. I think they do a great job too. I think it's great, it's about 50/50, you know, contractors and town employees. I just had a question. Do we have an idea of, even though it's been a relatively mild winter, it's amazing that you've been out 18 times. Do we have an estimate of a number that, how much we've spent to date?
Yep, we do because we asked that question last week. Nancy?
Today we spent $397,000 out of $497,000 budget.
And often too, we order salt and have it constantly stocked and that's the biggest expense because a couple of years ago, nobody could find salt. So when we have an opportunity, we stock up for the next storm. So those are big expenditures.
And we can keep that.
And we can keep that because we have the shed. Yep.
And we try to balance it because we don't want to put the salt shed now because what we try to do is purchase it in the summer at a reduced rate so that we can get a better rate for it. We bought all our salt in July and knocked a couple dollars off the price.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Well, now we get to the good part. Oh, no, we have one before you. Okay. But Kevin's got, he's got the whole night here. We just have one in between. I'm just saying, we got waterways.
A waterway. I thought it was shellfish.
We did, now both.
Is that?
Both.
Oh, is that part of that now?
Marty, we have lots of waterways commission members here too, so that's terrific.
Okay, good. It's number 66 and 295. We have waterways, waterways and shellfish. Which one do you want to start with? 66? Yeah, why don't we go 66?
Last one.
Yeah, we'll start with waterways.
I was just gonna say before we start, Franny just came in. Franny, I tried to do you some justice of all the work you did at the boat show, but I don't know how good it came up, but thank you very much.
My pleasure.
But you guys should also know, Fran has been up there for 18 years doing the same thing, not, you know, for the town.
Like I forgot, I should have said he's been there 20-something years he's been doing it.
Doing a great job.
Worth it. Steve Talzabell?
So are we doing waterways or shellfish?
We do waterways.
Waterways. Okay. Do you want to start on my goals and objectives or the budget itself?
Let's start with the budget numbers. Basically, so 2017's original budget was as $1,062,949.
Yep.
Department request this year is $1,093,626 and the town administrator recommendation is $1,031.
It's predominantly the capital.
Nancy, what did we move out of here? Did we move?
Nothing.
So the technical went down from 44 to 17?
Yes. And that is permitting for the South River that we put additional funding in there last year for that we don't have in there this year. The dredge. Yes. Was additional funding for the dredge permits.
And then the capital went down 25 grand for the principal on the deck?
Yes.
Otherwise it's pretty level funded, right?
Correct. It is. We asked for a couple of increases. You know, one was for some landscaping supplies over at the Maritime Center, beautification and to try to keep the potholes down.
And the revenue side?
The revenue side, we actually went up, but most of our funds don't come in until this time of year for the slips. And part of that was due to the waterways user maintenance fee for the mooring holders.
FY '18 forecast is $1,184. So, year-to-date, is that year-to-date number correct?
It is because we don't collect our slip fees until...
Okay, that makes sense.
We don't send out the bills till the springtime.
Right.
So we collect them just before July 1st.
So the revenues projected at 1,184 like Marty said, and the expenses are 103,1?
Yes.
Nancy, what's the retained earnings now?
Waterways have retained earnings in appropriate of $576,000 going into this and we aren't using any to support their operational budget and there's $117,000 recommended in the capital plan, which would leave them about $460,000.
That's great.
Still lower than, still lower than we'd like. We'd like it more around six, seven, but it's definitely, you know, we're watching it, but it's not critical, but we would like to see that at six.
Any new people, Steve?
Last year we let a couple of people go. I won't be, there'll be a couple of people I don't ask back and we'll be replacing them with new people. And I'll set up interviews for the new hires with Stephen Salk. He'll be sitting in on the interview process with myself and Mike Beers.
But no new positions there?
No new positions.
Steve, I haven't told them what, you know, some of your capital ideas are. I haven't said anything I've gonna mention, you know, tonight, but you might as well enlighten them with what you've been talking the past, well, past couple of meetings and so forth. And you had someone come down the last meeting and talk about, you know, some of these things about, could be some big changes down there.
Yeah, the first item is we had, I had the wiring inspector and the fire department out last, last spring, spring, summer, and we walked the docks and they identified some of the issues. We corrected any issues we could at that particular time. We also walked some of the other marinas throughout the town of Situate. One of, one of the issues was there's no emergency shut-off, like a one-point shut-off to shut the marinas down. So the wiring inspector asked me to change that. So we put in a shunt trip breaker with GFCI protection. And that is on my capital plan and also if we go ahead with the other project that I'm proposing, other GFCI protection as well as part of that plan. Later, it was right around the beginning of July, we had an issue where we had a electrical short circuit on the Cole Parkway gangway where the wires, one of the wires got cut through from a sharp edge on the wireway that wasn't properly protected. The rounded corner ended and it was about a half an inch and it was just enough with the temperature and the tides to cut through and we have a small electrical issue. And that's where that shunt trip breaker, they could have just shut the system down. Instead, it was arcing and it created some heat and it cut into another wire. We were able to make some repairs to it and I think it was about $10,000 or $12,000 that was all set to replace the wire and to make the repairs and get the marina up and running. We were without power Cole Parkway, I think, for a day and a half. So it was, so that's one of the projects. The next project is a de-icing system. I know one of the concerns was where to put the floats and I was charged with trying to find other locations, more cost-effective ways to do it rather than spending $100,000 to truck them down the street and bounce them over the road. I looked into a lot of different ways, a lot of different locations of where to put it and we were just, part of this, we were just awarded a grant through the Seaport Economic Council that I had been working on myself with Nancy Durfee, Paul Scott and Dick Eckhaus actually helped me with some of the history of the harbor. And we were just awarded that. So this all kind of goes with that project. with the temperature and the tides to cut through and we have a small electrical issue. And that's where that shunt trip breaker, they could have just shut the system down. Instead, it was arcing and it created some heat and it cut into another wire. We were able to make some repairs to it and I think it was about ten or twelve thousand dollars afterwards all set, um, to replace the wire and to make the repairs and get the marina up and running. We were without power Cole Parkway, I think for a day and a half. So it was, so that's one of the projects. The next project is, um, a de-icing system. Um, I know one of the, um, concerns was where to put the floats and I was charged with trying to find other locations, more cost-effective ways to do it rather than spending a hundred thousand dollars to truck them down the street and bounce them over the road. I, um, looked into a lot of different ways, a lot of different locations of where to put it and, um, we were just, as part of this, we were just awarded a grant through the Seaport Economic Council that I had been working on myself with Nancy Durfee, Paul Scott and Dick Eckhaus actually helped me with some of the history of the harbor. And we were just awarded that. Um, so this all kind of goes with that project. And what I would like to do is leave the floats in the water. And we'd install these de-icers. I have some pictures of them if you'd like to see them. And what it does is it doesn't allow the ice to form around the marina. So the marina, because it's on pilings, it just go up and down. It doesn't shift all around the harbor the way it has in the past. Uh, the last waterways meeting, I presented my capital plan to the waterways members. I had a gentleman, Bob Allen from Metropolitan Yacht Club, who's been doing this same system for the past twenty years. And he explained all the, you know, the ins and outs and, and the good and the bad to the de-icing. And, um, at the end of the, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a lot of concerns and I think he addressed a lot of concerns. Uh, waterways did vote on it. Um, and I think there, everybody was in agreement. There was one abstention. Um, but I can show you the pictures.
How much does it cost?
The, the de-icers, the quote that I got was... Seventy.
Seventy-four, was it?
Seventy-four thousand dollars. They were.
Even a four hundred grand to take it out of, yeah?
Yeah.
Bring the pictures up. Not when we're quoted.
Fifty grand.
The gentleman from Metropolitan Yacht Club probably sent me fifty pictures of his marina over the past three years. Um, he said that he has units that have been in use for the past twenty years. I had a, uh, useful life of ten to fifteen years for the manufacturers that.
So you just put them in the water and they just spin the water and keep it?
Yeah, what they do is you, you put them in the water, you tie them off to the floats and you get them down, uh, like three or four feet and they bring the warmer water up and it keeps the water moving so it doesn't allow the ice to form. You only turn them on when the temperature drops. And the way he explained it is if seawater freezes around twenty-seven degrees. So when it gets to the twenty-seven or twenty-five degrees, depending on what the forecast is, you might go out and turn twenty-five percent of them on. Gets a little colder, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent. If it's warm during the day or if there's just a lot of, you know, if it's a bright sunny day but still cold and not a lot going on, you can shut them off because you get a lot of the radiant heat. He also, there was some concern about ice flow and what happens when the ice starts to shift. Um, he has the same issue up there and what he did was he, um, put a few of them out on the corner of the dock and he directed it so that it made a current to keep the ice off the floats themselves. My big concern was if we didn't do anything and we had ice flow, would it just take out all the pilings that we're planning on putting in? I'm also concerned with safety. Um, as we take these floats out, you know, things happen. Um, one of the cleats could pull out, you, the dock, you know, could split in two, break in half and hurt somebody or kill somebody. We had another electrical issue where somebody drove a screw into one of the conductors. Uh, anything like that could happen every time we take these docks apart and put them back together. You could have additional liabilities. So by leaving them in, there is a risk that you can get some damage. Um, but it cost last year before prevailing wage, it was twenty-two thousand dollars to put them in and twenty-four thousand dollars to take them out approximately. And that has only since gone up because of the prevailing rate. So if we make it a year and a half or two years without any issues, we're actually putting a little money back into the account. So in three years, and we have an issue where we lose a float or a dock or, you know, a piling, we have some money that we can replace that.
So, and, and some of these pictures here, it shows that they leave their boats in as well. We don't have that on the plan?
No, we don't. That was, they do do that up at Metropolitan Yacht Club and I do not, I do not recommend that. I, I don't want to be babysitting people's boats and.
I thought that was just, you know, at least extend the season.
We could extend the season. Um, one of the other marinas actually charges a little bit more to extend out the season by another, you know, fifteen or thirty days. We could, we could start it earlier and end it later and have a, you know, a small charge for that because some people want to keep them in. They actually do that at Metropolitan to try to pay for the electric, electric usage, to subsidize the electricity.
More options. That's nice.
I have worked on it. It's been, I've been up nights thinking about this and wake up in a cold sweat.
As long as it takes. It's a great idea to, um.
It might not be our final solution, but it is.
Yeah.
It's only in the right direction anyway. Investigate the other things, but this is pretty biowealth league.
We'd store them up in the attic where we store the pedestals now and.
How many would you need?
We would need, um, and this is what the manufacturer, he actually came out and walked the docks and looked at the facilities. He suggested six, sixty-two units at Cole Parkway and fifty-one units at Maritime Center. And they'd be placed every forty-five feet so you'd go back and forth on opposite sides of the dock.
So the total, seventy-seven thousand, was it?
Seventy-four thousand.
Seventy-four thousand.
And that, that's like a list price. And there was some questions because, um, the gentleman at, um, Metropolitan Yacht Club was paying less. I actually had in there that we were going to use thirty M twist locks, which we're going to be using one-twenty-five volt and GFCI protection. And also I extended the length of the cords from twenty-five feet, the standard, to a fifty-foot cord. So, and when I shop it around, I'm sure I can get a better price on them.
It's exciting.
So those are my two capital plans.
People would be happy not to see those sitting down there.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the requests we expect to see probably in the fall, which is unusual to do capital in the fall, but we put it on hold is to do a re-gridded mooring field. So we don't want to wait another year to do that. Um, and like I said, we don't typically do capital in the fall, but for timing purposes, it will make sense. So that would be another capital.
Could we re-grid, and that's been a great discussion, without dredging?
You can re-grid.
You're gonna be definitely limited how many you're gonna gain, but if we could.
You save a lot of money when you're dredging because they've already got everything removed from the water and if it's gonna be replaced, then you're gonna put it if it's found a place, you know, the moorings.
But what about? What about areas where there aren't any moorings now? And I, I don't know, I'm just making, you know, out towards, off Museum Beach going towards the lighthouse. And I don't know if that's a very protected area and I don't know if that would be viable, but.
Well, the Army Corps told us several years ago that if we attempted to dredge out in that area, we would have Cedar Island in no time at all.
Okay, so.
Because there's only about a hundred-and-fifty feet of actual land going across.
So Cedar Point would be an island?
Cedar Point would become an island.
Oh.
It would actually break it off on Wrighthold Point.
Wow, right.
So that's, it's mud. There is always a possibility of putting mud moorings in there, but you know, that's up to Stephen.
Title.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay.
And the, the regirding of the, the field, um, is it just, it would be the engineering to re-grid the moor fields. Uh, and then there would be additional costs, you know, depending on if the mooring holder moved the mooring or if the town moved the mooring to put them in place. There was an adjustment in the cost to that from when it was looked at about four or five years ago.
So shellfish, is it two ninety?
Shellfish.
What number?
Two ninety-five.
The last page.
The very last page.
Someone got a raise. What was the guy's name that did it for years?
Mr. Strassus.
A math teacher or something?
Mr. Strassus.
Yeah.
Social studies, love that.
So shellfish?
We actually didn't get a raise.
No, it's the same.
It's two thousand dollars less than it was the year before, but.
Oh, I'm looking at the actuals.
Budget's leveled.
The actuals, no, from, from sixteen, it says the actuals were five.
So the salary has stayed the same.
Eight thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Um, I, yeah, for the total budget. Um, there was, um, some mileage, uh, it was turning fifty dollars. We changed it to fifty dollars.
Steve?
We good with it?
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
There's a question back there.
Hi, um, just a concern that, um, I know you haven't talked about it yet, Dave Frieden, by the way, Waterways Committee, but I, I don't think it'll be a capital item. It's an expense item that's not being considered in this, uh, next, next fiscal year's budget. The consultant that was hired that produced a great report, again, it hasn't been discussed by you, but it's been presented in the public, talked about making the Harbor Masters Office more efficient and better run with an investment in some software and maybe some hardware. But I don't think it's a major, major investment. But with nothing specifically allocated for this coming fiscal year, it might be difficult. We might have to wait another year, I think. And again, we're not even sure of the numbers and that's the challenge. I think that, you know, the, uh, budget may have to, you know, for Tricia to sort of come up with a number to, to put on it. Uh, but if we have to wait a whole of a year, it may be difficult for all the users of the waterways and the Harbor Masters Office to, to improve itself with no money in the budget to, for new computers or new software. Um, so that's just a comment that maybe we ought to consider an allocation of some sort.
So Dave, the budget was due December fifth and the report still hasn't been finalized or recommended to the board or adopted. Uh, budget instructions were level funding. So to your point, it's something we'll look at within the budget, but we don't have a cost yet and, um, we just need more definite data before we can look at it, make a decision.
So do you think it might be?
I, I, I can't comment on that because I have no idea what it might be.
Makes sense. I mean, we haven't seen the report.
I know.
We need, we need to get an estimate, so, and then we can go from there.
You're working.
Yeah, and that's, that's perfect.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank everybody from Waterways for coming as well.
Yep.
Kevin, back to the big chair. Kevin, can we just start with snow and ice since we just sort of talked about that?
Love to. Always.
I know it'll be quick since you touched on most of the high points anyway.
Okay.
Who's this guy at the end there? Okay, Sean. All dressed up.
Now you've.
Yes.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Very good.
All right, we're just gonna do the, um, snow and ice budget since Kevin just talked a lot about it with Mike, so go right into that first.
Okay, the budget's four ninety-seven, it's one-one-three, same as last year. We've spent what, three-oh-something, you said?
Three-oh-nine.
Three-oh-nine so far?
Yeah. It's not gonna snow anymore.
We would not complain about that. Um, we are, we've, we've done some damage to our salt shed. Not damaged, but we've used up a lot of salt. We're bringing a couple, a little bit of salt in now just to carry us over and make sure we get through the winter, but fingers crossed.
Is that in your number?
Not yet, no.
And then maybe just fill it in the summer?
What we typically do is we try to fill it in the summer because this year I was able to get, I think, a dollar or two off.
Right.
Um, and one of the things we've been lucky with, we've been actually, um, tying into Norfolk County for the bid because their bid comes in a couple of dollars cheaper. So we've been tying into that in the state bid list because we say we're on the border. So we request to get it that way and, and that saves us a couple of dollars. Anything we can do to save a few bucks, we usually do.
These are what you're buying now, obviously, is at a premium. I mean.
Well, it's at the state, it's at the state bid price. If I'm buying it in July and saying I want to buy two thousand tons, what will you do for me? They sometimes knock a couple dollars off per ton.
Right. But I mean, you just said you had to buy some now, so that's.
But they have to honor the state bid price that we signed up to, so.
Right, right.
Which is a good price and actually we're purchasing it cheaper than Tainoawal or some of the other communities around, about four dollars, five dollars a ton cheaper.
How much can we hold?
We are probably up around two thousand two hundred tons. It depends how much we push, you know, how high we push it in. The higher we push it in, the more we risk doing damage and punching out one of the sides. So we try to, we try to get as much in as we can.
I don't have any questions. Anybody's question? Highway and grounds, four, no, I'm sorry, administration engineering, four-twenty-one.
How are we doing? We doing four-eleven tonight or no?
Administration's four-twenty-one, the engineer's four-eleven.
So we're doing both of them, except obviously.
Yep.
Which one do we want to start with, engineering? Smaller number. So engineering, last year it was six hundred and eighty-seven thousand four fifteen. Department request this year is seven oh-five five eleven. Town administrator recommendation's six forty-seven four fifty-eight.
So just capital. So we, oh, wow. So we reduced.
The reductions were in the technical services. I think last year we were about thirty-three thousand dollars in technical services and it went down to twenty-five. That's kind of the big number in that.
No, the big number is that we're only putting four fif, three fifty in the roads instead of four hundred.
Fifty thousand of that is, um, support of the Coastal Resource Officer because we've lost our grant funding for that position.
So there's fifty thousand in that for Nancy's salary.
So it's, it's in conservation?
So fif, so there's two hundred for roads, two hundred for foreshore protection, fifty of that foreshore protections has been transferred over to conservation for Nancy's salary because we didn't get the FEMA elevation grants. We talked about this.
But what about this fifty? Is this the fifty? Oh, this is both, this is both, two hundred for, for both. Well, Nancy pays for herself like eight times over, so.
About two thousand. She's brought in eight million in grants. And right now, we talked about, we have more work than we can do in two years.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? I'm hearing a phone.
Yeah.
It happened on the weekend. I committed some papers. Is there some way of like silencing that because it's really echoing through the wall?
It's my office. Let me go over and see if I can, I, I think it's doing robo calls. It'll go cyclical. I don't know if I can stop it, but I'll see if I can.
It did. I saw it Saturday. I was in, it just kept ringing.
I just picked him up and hung him up and.
I just, the people on TV can't hear.
That's why everybody was upset.
But this literally is constantly going on and I can hear it. Sean, you must be going nuts because it's on your side over there. Thanks. Yeah, it was, it just, that doesn't stop for any reason. Okay, where were we? Okay.
Anything we need to know about this, Sean? No new positions?
No, sir. Nothing. Looks good to me.
Move on to four-twenty-one then. So last year it, um, one thirty-eight seven twenty-six. Department requests this year one-four-four zero nine six. Town administrator recommends one-four-three-eight nine six. Very, obviously very close.
Just step increases.
Step increases in salaries, yeah.
That's it. And also in the. Anything to add to that, Kevin?
No, um, pretty straightforward, I thought.
Yep.
Okay, move on to highway and grounds. Number four-twenty-two. You'll notice there's a typo on one of those pages there.
Three hundred and ten grain?
Yeah, it's actually an extra zero. So that, so ignore that number.
Are you sure?
I don't want to do. I don't want to do it on my laptop and re-figure the whole seventy-five million dollar budget, but I will verify that it's only a technical error.
I verified when Nancy, when I got in, with Tricia and Nancy's...
Mike's not getting a new...
I tried to embed them really deep in there so you have to look for them, but Martin keeps finding them on me. And I did fix the phones for you, John, it was very technical, I took them all off the hook.
Thank you.
So, capital outlay?
Two-seventy-nine.
So last year's budget was one million, fifteen thousand, three sixty-eight. This year, department request, one million, thirty-six thousand, four forty-one. Town administrator recommendation is...
Be about one-point-one.
Oh yeah, that's because I can't go by that number.
Can I take out two-seventy-nine?
One million, fifteen thousand, roughly?
Twenty-one, one-forty-six, a million forty-six.
Looks like it's equipment. That's the increase, three-hundred-and-ten thousand.
That's the typo.
That's a typo, so you gotta, so you gotta subtract...
Two-seventy-nine, so it's a million forty-six.
So salaries and wages? This budget funds the DPW contract, so that's contemplated in these numbers that are up, given the wage changes we're talking about. So that's accounting for a lot of the increase?
But no, no new positions, just...
No new positions, and...
I know the answer, I'm just...
Yeah.
And there are some open positions right now, right?
We have, we have...
An operator?
One person that's down, that's probably going out on disability, that will be being replaced in future.
Is that the vacancy on the equipment operators, you mean?
I believe so.
Okay.
So it looks like your goals this year, though, is to, for 2018, the Kent Street, Hadley Road, are they pretty much in line with getting done this year?
That's what we...
For this coming fiscal year?
What we would like to do, we have been pricing Kent Street out and looking at Kent Street. We were caught off guard this year, Kent Street was in the water project in the future because that was one of the old lines, if you recall, that we were gonna switch over, we came in to do a change order on that area, so that kind of put that to the forefront. It's not the greatest, we would like to do Kent Street, and we've already been pricing it out. We do not have the bids yet from the consortium that we're involved in, so once we get the bids, we will factor out with our funds how much we can do. We'd like to do both those areas up.
So from Edward Foster all the way to Greenfield Lane is the desired area to be done?
Correct.
Curb to curb, is that...
Well, far, almost to the Driftway.
Almost to the Drift, okay.
Go as far as we can. It depends where the prices come in and how much we have to spend on it.
And then it says replace a thousand feet of sidewalks, so are you redoing the sidewalks then on Kent Street, all the way up to where they crosses over to the bike path on Greenfield or Gilson Road?
No, the... The sidewalks are actually on Hadley, that could be a misprint that that get in there. We weren't gonna replace all the sidewalks on Kent Street, they weren't in horrible shape.
Hadley's terrible.
Hadley's terrible, but the, what I'm talking about is the Kent Street sidewalk. That's a better sidewalk, we'd evaluate that when it comes. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have the funds to do both.
No, but Hadley, I think, is, I mean, looking at both of them, Hadley, and, you know, I know you guys have tried to do repairs on them, and obviously, when the plow runs down, it's just trying to go by the edge, and you could use a plastic plow and it would probably rip those up, and they're all over the roads right now, you know?
Yep, and our, and our goals, those are the two areas we'd like to focus on and get some work done, but as I said, it's, we'll see how far we can go, once the bids come in and we get the asphalt's going, and also the price of sidewalk and other miscellaneous stuff through the consortium. And then the other thing we have is we're in the engineering process of the culvert on Gilson Road, and that's, just to let the board know, that's turning into a larger project, just working with the different agencies on, on the, it's not just opening up and throwing a pipe in, it's working with all the agencies on how to keep the salt marsh alive, how to flush it properly, and there's a lot of permitting involved in that, it's not a... I know, Sean.
Anything's better than what's there.
I know.
We could just go out and do it tomorrow, and it would be an improvement, and it would last a long time. I just, a couple of comments or questions? So Kevin, you're talking about drainage pipe on Kent Street, so will the drainage pipe happen in that same area?
There'll be, there'll be some drainage improvements, it's not gonna be a replacement of the whole system. Mike has some different areas that he wants to work on, and that's what he's gonna incorporate as he goes there. Part of the drainage, that road, if you look at it, it is completely flat, so what we'd do is we'd re-crown the road, and I can let you address this, Mike, he's got some catch basins, he's got a repair, just to get the flows going there.
You're not putting concrete pipe in?
We're not doing all new concrete pipe or anything to that effect.
Just that would delay the resurfacing?
It would delay the resurfacing, and we're not, we're, we don't have the funds to do, to do everything like that.
And Mike, don't think that that patch didn't go unnoticed on Kent Street in the bottom of final half. I saw it today, and, thank you. That was, that was all I...
I haven't driven over it yesterday, today I did, I keep avoiding it going around.
Well, it's fixed.
So I'll be out tomorrow, then that's good.
There's a really bad one coming up by the end, did you see that, near the manhole?
Yeah.
So I don't know how deep it is.
In, in that whole area, as I said, it was a pipe, I think it was from nineteen-oh-one that Wally pulled out, and that's where we had that leak, right at St. Mary's, that the pipe finally gave out, but they had two pipes in that road, and what they did is they left the old pipe, they never switched the old, the services over onto the newer pipe. Now, the newer pipe, I'm talking from the sixties, but they left the old pipe from nineteen-oh-one in service this entire time. So on that street, you had two pipes, one for the right side of the road, one for the left side of the road, and the pipe that they had to replace in the sixties from nineteen-oh-one was never addressed, so that pipe just stayed in service, leaking and everything else, so we, we finally got that taken out, you know, and taken out of commission, which is, which is a help to the system.
Okay, anybody else? Do you have anything?
No?
Okay, move on to Water Enterprise, number sixty-five. So the revised budget last year was four million, four eighty-six. Department request this year is four million, three sixty-one. Town administrative recommendation is four million, three eighty-eight. Why was it revised last year? What was... Was that revision?
Probably capital and...
Special town meeting appropriations, yes, for what?
Did we hire somebody else?
There are vacancies in the department, but there's also an extra position in there. And Nancy reminds me yet again, the contract settlement is in there as well, the wages. So the wages reflect the new wage scale that, that hasn't been ratified yet, but we've contemplated that settling and it funded it.
And you have electricity going down?
Yep.
Yes, you do. Just because rates have gone down?
In the actual, if you look at fiscal sixteen, what our year-to-date total was?
We've been also making some updates to some of the pumps and putting variable frequency drives on them, so they don't just, before they used to run like a light switch, you'd turn it on, it'd run full blast, a hundred percent. These start up slower, and they can run only at forty or fifty percent, so we're hoping we see some recoup back in the energy.
We're already seeing improvements at the sewer plant.
Really?
Have they gotten down at the Sand Hills pump station, is that completed?
We did that als, the work is almost completed, we have some, we have a couple more things to do over there, but we're, we're ninety-nine percent done, it's in the small, short list, and that sewer treatment plant would well.
So one new position and electrical stuff going down and...
It's not a new position, it's just an abstract position, they're running...
Equipment operator.
The foreman, the foreman had retired, the foreman had retired, he's, he's not officially been replaced yet.
But I thought there was still one new, so there's not one new spot?
Nope.
Correct, replaced.
So to replace that person, they have to have licenses, or is your intention to move...
And that's, that's one of the things, what we did is we hired two new employees, and they've been working on getting their licenses. One of the employees we hired, he's required to have a hydraulic, a CDL, and also a distribution license, which he's, he has all of them now, and he's going for his advanced distribution license. We're hoping if he does get his advanced distribution license, he will fill that, fill that need.
And those are open to other, you know, first, other people in other departments within the town? If someone wants to move laterally, they can, if they want...
If somebody wants to move laterally, yes, and we're willing to help train. I mean, one of the things we tried to do is bring a couple people from the highway department over to the water department and, you know, work with them to get their distribution licenses and train them, you know, if they wanted to stay at the highway department though.
So even if you have the license, you get the pay, so if you had a water license and were in DPW Highway, you would get the pay for the license, so we're able to plug, plug you in when we have vacancies. We incentivize the employees that way, we have for the last five years, or six.
So for example, to follow on what Tricia said, is we ran into some trouble at the sewer treatment plant a year ago that we didn't have enough grade-six licenses. Adi Johansson has a grade-seven license, so he can meet the requirements. We're able to transfer him from public grounds over to meet our requirements into the sewer treatment plant until we can fill that, fill that gap.
Right, okay. Anybody, anything else?
No, anything else from you guys?
Sean's been with us since August, again, not responsible for the drought.
I thought he brought it with him.
But he's been doing a great job and made a lot of improvements down there, and we're lucky to have him.
Okay, move on to Sewer Enterprise, number sixty-four. Oh yeah, I've been there a couple of times.
A full tour?
Yep.
And as I said, full tours are always offered, anytime anybody wants to come down.
How many aerators are there?
How many were working that day?
Only one.
We have, we have all four working now, so that's a plus.
Was the big swimming pool in the back working?
No. Eighty-four.
It is now.
It is now.
So town administrator's budget is three-point-eight-four-oh, last year was three-seven-eight-seven, year before that, actual, three-six-five-four. Electricity, again, you mentioned that, is down? Repair and maintenance is...
We anticipate the electricity going down that much? We're also adding the BHPs to some of the different areas there, so we're hoping, you know, our fingers are crossed, obviously, you know, we'll know what the bill is when it comes in, but we hope, we hope we have a reduction.
The plant has had so many improvements in the stations and the way they're operating that, I mean, we were paying huge costs in electricity just because of those inefficiencies, and as you know, we've put a lot of money into sewer repair through special town meetings, and we're seeing, you know, the electricity reduction because they're being replaced with more efficient, right? Would you say that's fair to say, Will?
Yep, yeah, we're about halfway through a major maintenance overhaul, and during our maintenance, we're making efficiency one of our high priorities.
What kills us is those UV lights, and we have to run UV at a hundred percent, you know, when we have the high, high flows, which, which you guys all saw the lights, and it's just, it's treating the back, it's treating, treating it with, with light, and that's expensive.
Is there any other newer technology, Will, or Kevin, that might reduce that, or? No, that is it.
Well, we're looking at that for the copper, right?
We're looking at everything for the copper, yes.
It's this magnetic stuff that they have, but I don't know what that costs.
Okay. Well, we're hoping to have the presentation with the engineer soon. We just did a whole round, a huge round of sampling for the, for the copper, and we'll have more information at that point. There's been different things with Xylem and different groups that have presented things, but it's a process, so it's an addition to the plant, that gets expensive too.
Marty was just asking me, it's not, it's not all about, it's not about gallons per day, it has to do with the chemicals, copper and what's the other chemical?
That's the discharge in the...
Copper with, with the discharge was the problem, the manganese is on the other side, the water side. We try not to mix these two guys up too often with the water and sewer, but, but we do, we have, we have problems with the copper on, on the sewer side, the manganese is what we're dealing with on the, on the water side.
So we don't make our drinking water from the sewer?
People ask that.
It is pretty clean though, when it goes out.
It, it's very clean when it goes out.
What do they call it? Gray, no, whatever.
There's, there's gray water, and that's...
The term.
Gray water, and it's one of the options that, that, believe it or not, that has been looked at, if you can recharge certain water areas with the, with the water, they do that in areas of California.
I showed you the picture in Calif, from California where they do that whole golf course and everything, it's all, and it says, you know, obviously, don't drink the water, but it's all gray water. You know, and they're pretty strict out there.
Well, there's areas in California too that discharge back that gray water to their water wells, and let it filter through the ground, and then we do that, but that's, you don't have to do that anymore.
We have way too much water right now.
Okay, anybody else? Transfer Station, number sixty-three.
What was the retained earnings in those last two? Not whenever?
No, it's right here. On sewer, the retained earnings was six-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight as a special town meeting. We will be using three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand to support the operating budget, and then another ninety-five thousand for capital plan, which would leave it, leave it at two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand.
After this year?
Yep.
You're gonna have to address the rates in the fall.
Keeping in mind that we're also addressing projections of the fact that we had a drought and there was restrictions and a, and a impact, so what we were actually charging for water based on consumption was, went down, and those conservation measures will probably carry over into fiscal as well, to some extent. On the Water Enterprise, the retained earnings as of October nineteenth were one-point-four million, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand used to support the operational budget because of that expected loss of revenue, and then seven-hundred-and-ten thousand to support the capital plan, which would leave that retained earnings around four-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars.
What's a seven-ten for?
The capital projects, capital plan.
Well, is that the, well, we'll get to that.
So the original budget is one million, two fifty-five, two thousand seventeen. Department request for FY two-eighteen is one million, three twenty-four, nine twenty-six. Town administrator recommendation is one million, two eighty-two, two fifty-one.
So it looks like the hauling amount, you're requesting more, and are you anticipating that it's gonna be more costly hauling this year?
Yeah, the commodity is still going in the opposite direction. We're starting to see a little turnaround in the cardboard. Plastic is worth nothing, and the glass is increasing. There's one local vendor that's handling it in Franklin. MSW is flat, isn't it? Yes, yeah, that stayed relatively, as well as Sunny Debris right now, yeah, yeah, so we'll wait and see how that comes in.
And just, just to clarify that, that doesn't mean we're, you know, not, not to recycle, I want to say to people, you know, recycling is still key. When, when we say it's flat, or it's not worth as much for the cardboard, we're still not necessarily paying, for us to get rid of our waste, say, it could be ninety-two dollars a ton, but for us to get rid of, say, cardboard because it's separated, it might cost us ten dollars a ton. So in the long term, we're saving money, and we're meeting our, we're meeting our goals still, but before, a couple years ago, ten years ago, we might have been getting twenty dollars a ton for that cardboard, it was cash, it was paid back to the town, as opposed to a cost, so that's where our net deficit of thirty dollars is. So if the fuel costs go up and they're charging more at the paper mills, recycling becomes more attractive. With the, with the oil down as much as it has, I think it's making the paper mills, it's driving their costs down. But, that's my, my gut.
And just volume. I mean, so many more towns...
Are doing it.
Yeah. I mean, people who were recycling 20 years ago, they were getting unbelievable cost. I mean, they couldn't get enough material. Now everybody recycles, so there's just an unbelievable amount of volume there.
We had one vendor pretty much go out of business, didn't they? It was a very...
Yeah.
He had, he had retired and turned it over to the daughter and the, and the daughter had some problems with the company as well.
Right.
From the North Shore.
Before we go on, I know that there's that strip of land, that kind of triangular piece that borders the transfer station and the MBTA, just might be wise to think about what could be used and incorporated into the transfer station use of it. It's landlocked now, so I'm like, unless, it's not gonna be sold to the MBTA, so I just think that is there some way to maybe take a look at that and see how could the transfer station best utilize it instead of letting it just sit there?
We could take a look at that and the, and the big thing over there is some of that land, if we ever had to rebuild that wall, that block wall that's up there, we would incorporate all that, a lot of that.
Just something to be, maybe take a look at this year, as I assume they're gonna probably start construction on that.
We have it, we have it laid out. We had it laid out a couple of years ago and we can get that relaid out and, or, you know, tighten that up a little bit and take a look at it, see if we can store something there or do anything, I mean.
We should put it before the town again is what we should do. I think we swung a miss on that one.
Yeah. But at least if not, then at least have some backup plan for potential use of it for town purpose or for renting maybe for storage, who knows? I mean, there could be some alter, alternate use that we could use and benefit by and the money could go into the transfer stations account.
John raises a good point, but aren't they, you know, I'm a little familiar with the area. Isn't the grade quite a bit different from your, where you, you know?
I think it's about 24 feet. Yeah. It's a, it's a huge grade change.
And then the property that we're talking about is asphalted and it would take quite a bit of construction to, to utilize it, but if, if it was easy, that'd be wonderful.
You know, when they ramp up to dump the CND in the back, that's already almost that grade with the parcel abiding it, you know? So I'm just saying, and of course, if you, if you could think of some way of entering from behind it off of New Driftway, then you could maybe utilize it, incorporate it. I'm not really sure, I don't know whether or not you could ramp up. Who knows? All I'm saying is, is that at some point, it's gonna be there and it's either gonna start springing, sprouting trees and bushes or we can incorporate in the transfer station and maybe utilize it. You can utilize it for rental or something and maybe add to your coffers for the revenue.
Yeah. No, great idea. We'll, we'll, we'll look into that. Okay, moving on to streetlights. It should be a real easy one, 424.
Mr. Chair, we already did that at our last meeting.
So it was real easy. Well, that's right, Al was here, I forgot about that. Good. Thank you for all your time.
Good job.
Can I make one last comment?
Sure.
Citrus Boys Hockey Team is ranked number one in D2 right now. They broke into the Globe Top 20 today and we're number 18 in the state. And there's, the coach happens to be before us right now, Mike Breen. How many games are left, Mike? Couple of games left and then playoffs?
One more game left and then playoffs.
So go to the games. They're a ton of fun, the team's awesome and they're gonna play deep into the playoffs this year. Good job, Mike.
That begs the question, Mike, you know, where, where in town would be a good location for an ice rink, you know?
That's a good question.
The transfer station maybe, who knows?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to a discussion of vote of the selectmen's policy and the ABCC advisory for serving wine in private clubs. Serving, obviously, it's not just wine, right, Lorraine?
It's just wine.
Just wine? Okay.
Good evening. So I follow closely the ABCC advisories that come out and this one came out recently on February 14th, 2017. And this is a law, this is a, a law that was signed into law by Charlie Baker and it's an act relative to serving wine in private clubs. We had a selectman policy from 1998. Sean, you were on the board at that time?
That's right. Two flip-ins.
And basically this policy should remain the same with the exception of this new law that came into place for private clubs. So we've amended the Board of Selectmen, we call it the brown bagging policy, to reflect this new law. And this is what's before you is a draft. It basically says that as of this year, a club licensed under Mass General Law may permit its members to bring into the club's license premises wine lawfully purchased by them to be consumed on the premise with a meal purchased at the club.
So I have a question, Lorraine.
Yes.
Do you have to charge $30 per bottle to open it?
You know, I called them with that same question. I haven't got an answer yet.
That's ridiculous.
Because my question was corkage fee, you know, does a corkage fee only apply if you don't finish the wine?
I don't think so. I think it's, it's opening the bottle.
Yeah.
So the...
Or is it opening the bottle?
The law reads the club must charge a reasonable fee of at least $30 per bottle that is opened.
Right. That's how I read it too. So why would you even bother? I don't know, unless you bought a really expensive bottle of wine.
Right. So I don't, that's the one, that's the only piece of it that I...
You know, I don't know how many private clubs are gonna implement this policy because there's a lot of rules around it.
Is it optional?
Is this a private club with a license?
It is optional, up to the club.
Is this a private club with a license?
It's up to the club, however, our selectman policy forbade it, you know, wouldn't allow it to happen, so we had to modify it to include this.
So what does a private club do, if we pass this tonight, what does a private club, what can and can't they do?
Well, it's their option if they choose to, if the club permits its members to bring wine onto the license premise. So it's something that a club would need to permit.
So it's a license premises then? So it's somebody who already has a license?
Yes, I listed in the executive action all the clubs in Cituate that this would apply to.
So let's say Cituate Country Club.
Yes.
So let's say they had this, they would have to charge $30 per wine if they allowed people to bring wine into their?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's ridiculous.
I wouldn't bring any in. I just...
It's up to the club if they want to, if they want to allow this.
Okay.
So yet they have, they have a legal license now?
Yes. They do, but they're not allowed to use brown bagging according to our select policy. Nobody can bring in their own wine.
Yeah, right.
So the only thing this...
Why don't you get that clarified before we pass or?
So the issue before the board is you have a policy prohibiting it. Now a law has been passed saying it's allowable, so you need to amend the policy.
Right.
So we have to change ours?
Well, you have a policy that doesn't comport with state law now.
Right.
So that's why it's on your agenda.
But yet in the city of Boston, they're getting around it. They're brown bagging beer and wine and there's no charge. Marty Walsh is just allowed to do 20, 25 establishments.
And I would submit that the city of Boston is unique and that was considered when the legislation was passed.
Right.
Just need to know if there's a, a fee, mandatory fee of $30 or a reasonable corkage fee. That's all I'd need to know.
I think what Tricia's saying is regardless if there's a fee or not, this is now the law and we have to amend our policy.
Can we just do away with our policy?
And just go back to state?
From 1998 and then just revisit it in two weeks or see if we get more...
So our policy says no one can be doing it now?
Yeah.
Correct.
We've had a policy that says no brown bagging. Now there's a law that says you can brown bag.
For private clubs only, under these circumstances.
So ideally your new policy would just say brown bagging is allowed in accordance with MGL XXX.
Okay, you can review it and we can put it on the next agenda if you're not...
Well, no, I mean, I don't think there's any...
So technically you can't vote a policy the same meeting it's introduced, so we can put it like Lorraine suggested on the next agenda and she can try to get another just informational piece for the corkage fee.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Would you like to do that, put it on the next agenda?
Sure.
Yeah, and hopefully you get any...
And I'll get you any answer on the corkage fee.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Lorraine.
We have a discussion of vote on the temporary marijuana moratorium, zoning article for distribution and sale of recreational marijuana.
So the board determined they want to go forward with this special town meeting, so you have a, a request from the planning board that they want to contemplate this. So in accordance with chapter 48, the Board of Selectmen needs to formally vote to turn it over to the planning board for review because that starts a time clock for them.
Great. Your motion, please. Move the board turn over the zoning article request for consideration of a temporary marijuana moratorium for distribution and sale of recreational marijuana in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48.
Second? Second, Mr. Danny, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, unanimous.
Next, we have a discussion and a vote of the Twinning Cork County Charge.
So this is something we've talked about since we adopted our friendship pact with the folks from Cork and I was finally able to get to it after the budget was done as Mr. Danny knows. And drafted this charge, forwarded to Patricia Jacard as well for her input, she's fine with that. And this is a separate charge for Cork County, sets out the duties which are called from the friendship pact that we actually executed with the Cork officials and allows you to solicit members and appoint them so we can have a permanent committee.
Okay. Agreed.
I should add that there was, there's been some question in the past about whether or not there should just be a sister city committee that encompasses the Sucey and Bree relationship as well. That's not possible because the Sucey and Bree sister, sister city is a registered 501-3C. So the town has to have this one separate and apart. They can still collaborate and talk, but we do need two separate standing committees as a result of them being a nonprofit.
Motion, please. Move to approve the Cork County West Cork Municipal District Friendship Pact Committee Charge.
Second. Second, Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Now, do, once this is, we haven't heard back as far as like where it stands as far as twins, twin town that we're paired with, right?
We don't know the town yet, I don't think, no.
Not officially, I mean, the concentration was on the West Cork.
Right.
And they did...
There were two, one was Baltimore and I forgot what the other one was.
It began with an S, Shaw. I want to say Shawshing and I know that's wrong, but it began with an S. But again, that was left to the future discussion.
Okay. All right. So there's no, I know that they mentioned about trying to formalize something later or at some point in this year. At this point, we're, we're really stuck until we're able to determine what our twin city would be or our town would be before we could actually execute anything along that line, fair to say.
I don't, I mean, I think we could, the, the, the question is really budgetary. I did increase the budget in our year line item for it. It's nominal and we were trying to think if we had extra money, once we knew local aid and stuff, we could port more money to actually fund exchanges, but since we're still in the infancy and nothing's really concrete, it's hard. I think I put a thousand in there, but that's a thousand that we never had before for the Twinning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I losing my mind?
Okay. All right, we're gonna skip to number five, that we're gonna discuss and vote, the Maya contract agreement.
So as you know, we're moving to a new health insurance company, um, July 1st and this is just the vote to approve the actual business agreement for Maya to take over our, be our healthcare provider. We're not having a new health insurance company, I correct that, a new health insurance provider. And the employee informational meetings are starting...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And we have a committee that reviewed all this and was...
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I, I do want to add to that because there was a steering committee meeting of the Mayflower Group and as you know, as you, Tony mentioned, we worked very hard because we concerned about the governance. And one of the reasons we met with all the unions was because Maya is, didn't replicate 100% the Harvard community plan. And we were able to meet with our employees to get almost the exact same plan they still had under Harvard with some mitigation to the employees. There were 42 employees impacted. The steering committee voted last week to eliminate Harvard Pilgrim. And the steering committee is also recommending that the legacy plans absorb a 26% increase. Our increase with Myers is 11.9%. So obviously that's a huge increase, so some consideration is being given to a blended rate so that the other groups, you know, instead of one insurance getting 26, they'd be a blended rate, that would be 19%.
Wait, who's, who said a 26%? Our steering committee said?
No. The Mayflower Municipal Group Steering Committee that we have left as of June 30th.
Right, when they told us that it was gonna be 11 or 12.
So had we stayed with them, the general board will be asking to vote on a 26% increase for the legacy plans. We were on RateSaver. A blended rate would be 19%. The RateSaver alone would be 11.1, Nancy?
With Maya, 11.1?
No, but with the...
It's 11.
It's 11 something. So all this is meant to say that what we predicted would likely happen, given their financial situation, their governance, is going to happen. Since over half the remaining members, you know the percentage who's still on legacy?
80%.
80% of the remaining units at Mayflower are on legacy, so the fact that they would vote a 26% increase upon themselves is highly unlikely. So that will just further impact the operations, we believe, of Mayflower, so, so we're very happy that we made this decision.
Good.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve the business associate contract between agreement for the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MEA, Health Management Trust and the Town of Cituate and its health plan effective July 1st, 2017.
Second. Second, Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just on Tricia's thought, since she mentioned it, just a shout out to any retirees that are still up and watching this meeting or anyone who may have watched it on YouTube later on, the meetings tomorrow are for the retirees that have Medicare supplemental plans, so at the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medics, they're Wednesday at the high school cafeteria because of the vacation from 10 to 12 and then again tomorrow afternoon from 1:30 to 3:30 and then Thursday afternoon from 11:30 to 1:30. And it's a sit-down presentation about the plan and then it will be again Thursday, April 20th, at the high school cafeteria.
Is it on the website?
This is, I'm actually reading it from our website.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna recuse myself, I'll send Mr. Danny back in and I won't be returning, so everybody have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Marty.
Tony already did the sports report, so I'm good.
Oh, I haven't even begun the sports report.
That's not John Day.
So we have one more item of new business. Mr. Danny will be in in a second, but this is the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the 10% ...
Motion to approve the Business Associate Contract Between Agreement for the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MEA, Health Benetton Trust, and the Town of Cituate and its health plan, effective July 1, 2017.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just on Trish's thought, since she mentioned it, just a shout out to any retirees that are still up and watching this meeting, or anyone who may have watched it on YouTube later on. Meetings tomorrow are for the retirees that have Medicare supplemental plans, so at the Blue Cross, Bushido Medics, they're Wednesday at the high school cafeteria because of the vacation from 10 to 12, and then again tomorrow afternoon from 1:30 to 3:30, and then Thursday afternoon from 11:30 to 1:30. And it's a sit-down presentation about the plan, and then it will be again Thursday, April 20th, at the high school cafeteria.
On the website?
This is, I'm actually reading it from our website.
Okay.
Awesome. Okay. All right, so I'm going to recuse myself, I'll send Mr. Danny back in, and I won't be returning, so everybody have a wonderful evening.
We go.
Thanks, Marty. Tony already did the sports report, so I'm good.
Oh, I haven't even begun the sports report.
That's not John, though.
So we have one more item of new business. Mr. Danny will be in in a second, but this is the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the 10% administration fee, which we talked about last meeting. As a quick overview, the town has the ability to charge 10% fee for the costs associated with booking and scheduling police details, correct me if I'm wrong, and we have the option to charge a fee or not. Mr. Kelly, who runs the parade, came in and asked if for this event, we could waive it for him, and we talked about it last week, talked about setting a precedent, and that this is really part of Cituate's community, and, you know, those were kind of the pluses and minuses I thought of it, I think we discussed there. And now, the three of us will have to vote whether we're going to waive it or not. Any other discussion, guys?
How much money did, was it?
It's $800?
That's what it's...
$800?
Stuck in my mind. And if it, we do set a precedent, like, you know, off the top of our head, it's, you know, Heritage Days, it's...
Really, it's anybody that comes in and wants a police detail, but...
And it's just the 10% admin fee.
Right.
That's all it is, so it's be really small. I don't see a problem with it.
John, any thoughts? You know, I mean, what I said last time, which is, I know there are certain events that the town holds, and that the 10% fee, I understand it's statutorily now, I just, I just see certain town events that are town events, and like, trying to raise money for them, whether it's St. Patrick's Day, whether it's the Christmas stroll, whether it's the Halloween in the harbor, I know they mentioned the Knights of Columbus with the carnival, and then Heritage Days, I just, I just don't see, you know, there's a part of in-kind donation that I think the town, you know, does an awful lot anyways, they do get paid for the services, any of the police and fire, or people who are there to ensure that it's safe. I just see this as a fee, and at least on this one, that I just, I'm not for saying charge the 10% on it. And I know that creates a potential slippery slope, because how do you define which in each event? And I kind of look at it and say, this is like the first major event after the winter, people come out in droves, it's a good family event, and that's the key, a family event. And I just think, in this case, we take each one case by case and we analyze it. If it's a road race for a specific, and I know that happens, and they're going to ask for it, well, those I can distinguish because I say this is more of a town event, like Heritage Days, and so that's, that's how I see it, and I'm inclined to say waive it. I'm not inclined, I am planning on voting that way.
And I think last year, it almost didn't happen, right?
Right.
Any comments from the audience? All three of you? No?
Want a motion?
Yeah, please.
Move to approve the waiver of the 10% admin fee for the police detail.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, three to zero. Moving on to correspondence.
Now, I think you covered all of it.
Did we have one letter? I saw a letter from somebody.
Yep, on the transfer station.
There's four things of correspondence.
And we already talked about the Sucey and Bree movie festival.
Yep.
And then...
Maybe Secretary Harris would like to...
I'd love to read the one for the transfer station, but I can, to whom it may concern, I just wanted to compliment the department that shows the new attendant at the transfer station. Is it George Dolan? He's fabulous, polite, ambitious, and keeping the yard looking so neat, and helping old ladies with their trash. Something Patton Doug...
Along with?
Oh, along, I just, her writing is just, it's hard to read. Along with Patton Doug, and I just lost it.
All right, good.
All right.
I'll just summarize the others.
Was it? Yeah, thanks.
So we got a letter from Comcast also, that changes affecting setup boxes, and they're charging us more. And, because I'm one at home right now saying, why don't we have Fios? Verizon isn't bringing Fios here, it's not an option. Until they decide to come here, we can't pay it. Xfinity, an equipment update on that? I don't even know. This is, and tuning your channels, and it's just a little one-page thing, I'm sure if you go to their website, you can see. I glanced right over this one.
Yeah.
So how do you replace your TV box? It's just instructional on how to do that. Approval of the minutes?
Will the Board of Selectmen approve and not release the executive session minutes for January 24, 2017 meeting?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, three to zero.
Move the Board of Selectmen release the executive session minutes for May 10, 2016 with reduction of pending items.
Second.
Reduction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, move the Board of Selectmen approve the minutes for February 7, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, three to zero. Any other business? Anything to...
I just want to say I received a Valentine from Jack R. Says, "Happy Valentine's Day, thank you for keeping our town awesome and making good decisions for our town. I hope you do something special this Valentine's Day. I know how hard you work, especially to have weekly public meetings. Thank you sincerely, Jack R." from the Wamptutuck Elementary, 5th grade. And as you all know, we get these every year, and it's just kind of a nice, again, it's nice to get good mail and good press, especially from a 5th grader at Wamptutuck School, and just say, "Thank you, Jack, that's very kind."
John? I got to read mine, I read it earlier, it's just, this is funny. From a Calvin L., and I don't know what school, I'm sure it's the same class. Dear Mr. Harris, Happy Valentine's Day, thank you for making our town 100% awesome. Also, I thank you for working for the town for three years. I appreciate your service and dedication. I hope you have a spectacular Valentine's Day." He's awesome.
Look, guys, probably, just... He's watching right now. And I got one as well, spelt my name right, which is a chore amongst itself. "Happy Valentine's Day, thank you for making our town a great place to live. Your hard work and dedication has made Cituate a beautiful place. I hope you know that we are appreciative of everything you do. Sincerely, Colton D., 5th grader at Wamptuck." Thank you, Colton. Thank you all the guys and girls at Wamptutuck. It's very nice to get some, like John said, some nice mail.
Mail, right.
Any other new business?
No.
No.
Not anything?
No.
Well, I'll, what was I going to... Well, I'd have to mention, I have to mention the basketball team.